I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting on Monday, August 3rd, 2020. Steve, call the board, please.
Trustee Carol?
Here.
Trustee Curtis?
Here.
Trustee Guffino?
Here.
Trustee Gailey? Trustee Gailey?
He's muted.
Oh, I'm here.
Thank you. Trustee Lowery?
Here.
And Trustee Martinez?
Here.
And the mayor is here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Comments? Trustee comments? Discussion? John, I think you had the first one.
That's correct. Thank you, Mayor. In just a few minutes, John Whitty from WVK Engineering is going to do a presentation for us on the stormwater conveyance study that they've been working on for us. But before he begins, I'm just going to give you a kind of a brief summary of the events that got us here. If you recall, back in March of 2019, the, the, a public works laborer discovered a sinkhole in a farm field that turned, turned out to be the result of the collapse of a 24-inch diameter storm sewer. And because of that collapse, the, the water from that pipe ended up flooding downstream farms. It kind of created a big pond on the King County Forest Preserve property. And it also backed up the storm sewer system in Tanner Trails 6. And this was a repair that was urgently needed to be corrected. And so we had JNS out to perform a temporary fix on this pipe. But as, after the fix was made, we videotaped the line and realized that the entire pipe was in pretty bad condition. And so after that, we hired WVK Engineering to perform a conceptual level concept study of potential solutions that could act as a long-term solution for, for the problem we were having. And so WVK will be going through those options, but in the meantime, we've also been communicating with local landowners, the, the farmers, as well as King County Forest Reserve, to kind of let them know that we're working on a solution to this issue right now, and it's been in progress for some time. And we continue to plan on doing that, working with them in the future, too. So tonight, John Whitty is online with us today from WVK Engineering. The information that he's going to present tonight is intended to be an update for the board, just to give you a status of, of the study and where we're at. In the near future, then, staff will review all these solutions and, and continue to evaluate the alternatives to determine if we're going to move ahead with, with the project. So at this time, I'd just like to ask John Whitty to begin his presentation.
All right, thanks, John. All right, hopefully you can hear me. Thank you, John, for that. Talk about just the Tanner Remington storm sewer outfall improvements. Just to kind of go through kind of a background, the Lake Run Ditch is on the east side, over on this side of the exhibit. And then Tanner Trails Unit 6 is on the right side. And then the 24-inch storm sewer outfall pipe runs all the way along this line, as you see here. It's approximately 7,000 feet of 24-inch HDPE plastic pipe. It is in poor condition, as John said. It drains Tanner Trails Unit 6 over here on the east side or the right side of the screen. And as it moves down, downstream, it drains from east to west. It picks up flow from the subdivisions of the Remington subdivisions here. And as it continues downstream, it picks up flow from two other discharge locations here, in this location where the ponds are. It also picks up a off-site drain tile that connects into this manhole here, an 18-inch drain tile. And then there's an 8-inch drain tile that connects in at this location here. So it does, it does accept some off-site flow in addition to the off, the discharge from the ponds. There's quite a few, quite a distance in manholes. There's approximately, on average, about 800 feet between manholes. On average, you know, we, on typical storm sewers, around 400 feet. So it is, is challenging to inspect and maintain the system. I mentioned the system is located on property owned by the Reckinger family and also the King County Forest Reserve. So John mentioned our scope was to analyze the existing system for the conditions of the pipe and also the capacity, and then provide some alternatives to improve the system and reduce the, the blowouts or the sinkholes, and come up with some conceptual costs for those alternatives. So I'll run through four alternatives with addition, with associated costs, and then we can summarize it from there. Proposed option one was to replace 4,000 feet of the 24-inch pipe, basically starting at Lake Run Ditch, and continuing upstream to this location here. So the red pipes are the, the new 24-inch, the new 36-inch pipes that would replace the 24-inch pipes. I failed to mention that the pipes in this location here and here are very flat. And actually, these two pipes are back pitched and the entire system is very flat. So even though it's a 24, existing system, the 24-inch pipe, it does have reduced capacity, just in the fact that it's a very flat slope to the pipe. So option one is to replace the 24-inch pipe with a 36-inch pipe up to this location here. Pro is it's the least expensive option that we looked at at $669,000. The con of the system, the drawback, is that this, the upper end of the system in this location here is still the poor-conditioned pipe. These pipes, after they were televised and we surveyed them, as John mentioned, they're in poor condition. The joints are failing and the pipe is, is squashed. So it's a, it's more of an oval pipe than a circular pipe, and that causes the joints to fail and also some cracks in the pipe, which accept water and soil from outside the pipe.
Mr. Whitty?
Yes.
Before you go any further, when you, by flat, did you mean that it's lying flat horizontally? Or do you mean the pipe itself is squashed flat?
Well, flat as far as the slope, as far as it's, there's not much difference in elevation, so.
Right, okay, thanks.
Is that going to change under this new proposal, this proposal?
It's still going to be relatively flat. That's why we would increase it to a 36-inch pipe. But we would eliminate those areas where the, the pipe is back pitched. That's where the biggest problem is, where those back pitch pipes reduce the capacity of the entire system, so.
Can I ask you something, Trustee Guffino here? Why is this? You know, why are we looking to replace something that, I mean, is it, was it the poorly designed or wrong material? Or we're looking at 700 grand just for this here? Why are we talking about this? I mean, what?
The, you know? It's not exactly sure as far as how the pipe was laid out. My-
Why did they put a plastic pipe in there to begin with? As it's poorly engineered, or what?
Yeah, I think kind of the history of this, this is John, John Laskowski. I believe part of the history of the construction of this pipe is that, at one point, the developer of one of the subdivisions in the area was going bankrupt. And as a result of that, a lot of the improvements weren't being able to, weren't going to be completed to design or to code. And what had happened then is there was a letter of credit remaining from that subdivision that was used to construct this pipe. It, our ordinance doesn't allow for PVC pipe or plastic pipe for storm sewers. It should be concrete. As John kind of alluded to, the, the manhole spacing is much greater than our code allows. So I don't know, I think this design at the time was one of those things where it was installed this way just to get something in there for the system to function. I don't think it may have been intended to be a long-term solution. I think the developer and, and the engineer at the time thought that the property to the north was going to develop, and at that time, this system would be replaced.
Typically, when we see plastic pipe deflected in this, in this condition, a lot of times it's a, when it was installed, it wasn't installed properly. Typically, a back trench backfill or aggregate around the pipe helps the pipe maintain its shape and rigidity. But in this case, we're not exactly sure, but I believe inadequate trench backfill may be the cause of the pipe deflection, so.
I have a question. How did this pass our code inspection? I mean, didn't we have any control over inspecting this to make sure that it was done properly?
I can't really speak, in a, in normal circumstances, we would have had, typically, you have engineers out there inspecting construction and observing the pipe being placed in the ground and making sure that things are constructed properly. I can't speak to that necessarily because I wasn't around at the time or familiar with kind of how things were being observed at that time. But to your point, yes, it is something where typically we would, we would have control over the inspection of this. And if there were problems with materials, we would call that out and have it changed.
So there's no liability back to the previous engineer or the company that approved this, or suggested it, or allowed it, or anything like that?
My limited memory about this is that it got talked about in some development meetings with staff. And this was at the tail end of Tanner Trails' construction. And it was, you know, we were into the recession, and it was kind of a mad scramble at the time. We called the letter of credit really just before the bank that had posted that letter of credit went under. And just before, I can't think of the developer's name, just before they went bankrupt?
Newman.
Right, just before they went bankrupt? It, it could be that, kind of like John said, that it was just a quick fix to try to get something in place, because I think there was already some issues out there, if I remember right. Who knows why it didn't get followed up with? I, I don't, but I do remember it being talked about at that time.
Oh, just to confirm with what everyone said, yes, so this, this happened, obviously, in the early to mid 2000s. And during that time, it's been conveyed to me, obviously, it was well before me as well. And I've spoken with the previous engineering firm that oversaw this, and it was conveyed to us that it was, no pun intended, a last-ditch effort to get something in place to function properly. It's been my understanding, not only through the conversations with our Public Works Director, John, but with WVK Engineering, that in theory, had it been trench backfilled properly, this pipe might not be in the condition it's in. And so where the frustration, I think, for the staff comes from in this is typically the engineering firm that oversees it, would be the construction manager on the project overseeing it to make sure it's compliant to code. This is obviously at a time before we had someone like John on staff, who's an actual civil engineer or an in-house engineer. So back then, we relied heavily on consulting engineers for everything.
So there's nothing else. I'll just continue on the, the, one of the, go ahead. Is there another question? I guess one of the cons of this is that this upper system will, that would not be replaced, and there could be, continue to be issues with sinkholes and leaking, leaking of the pipe and deflection of the pipe. So that is option one, replacement from Lake Run Ditch to this location here. Proposed option two was replacement of the entire system with 24, with 36- and 24-inch pipe, replacing 4,000 feet with a 24-inch pipe with 36-inch pipe in this location here, and then replacing the additional 3,000 feet with 24-inch pipe. So pro is it brings the entire system up to the required capacity. And one of the cons is the most expensive at $1,073,000. So this again goes through Reckinger partials and also the Forest Preserve partials. But it does, again, upsize the system and puts in concrete pipe instead of plastic pipe. Proposed option three was to construct a parallel storm sewer system to supplement the existing system. And this system varied in pipe size from 36-inch diameter, as you move up the system to 24, 18, and then 12-inch. It would basically, you know, increase the capacity using the existing system and then also using the supplementary system. The pro is, you know, it allows the construction of the proposed system as the existing system's in place, so it's, it's an easier construction. The con is that the existence, existing system could continue to fail in some, in spots. So you would still have issues possibly with this existing system going down and repairs being made and it failing. So that is the con. It is an expensive system at $828,000. That was option three. And then proposed option four was to replace the 24-inch pipe with 36-inch pipe, similar to option one from Lake Run Ditch up to this location here, and then 24-inch up to this location here. As a request by the village, we, we want to look at this just because this, this area, I'll go back one slide. If you see this dark brown area here in this field owned by the Forest Preserve, that's just a large depressional area. So in order to basically use that depressional area as a conveyance route from Tanner Trails Unit 6 pond through that depressional area to a new storm sewer system that would drain to Lake Run Ditch. Now, that depressional area is not as low as the pond, so that would require excavating a ditch through that depressional area that, that requires some earth excavation, which kind of drove up the cost. The pro is you're reducing your length of pipe, but the con is the excavated material and the cost for that drive up the cost to approximately $1.25 million. In early conversations, as John mentioned, we were talking to the Forest Preserve and the loyant landowners about, we're working through some options. And just early discussions with the Forest Reserve, they mentioned they, they would like to turn this area into a natural wetland area. There is some concern with some endangered birds in this area, so they're not really exactly sure if this would be feasible. We would need to further discuss it with them as far as the hydrology and what that would look like in the proposed condition as far as the habitat for that endangered bird. So those are the four options we analyzed. Just a quick summary. Option one was the least expensive. It conveys the design discharge for that lower end of the system, but does not avoid the risk of pipe failure in the upper end of the system. Again, that was $668,000. Option two, full replacement of the entire system eliminates the risk of pipe failure in the entire system, but one of the most expensive. Option three was supplementing the exist, the existing system with a parallel system, avoids removal of the existing system, and also increases the capacity using two systems, but does not mitigate for the risk of the existing system failing. And that cost was $828,000. And then option four was the pipe from Lake Run Ditch up to a kind of a depressional area detention pond on the Forest Preserve property, and excavated a ditch through that depressional area, reduces the length of, the total length of the proposed pipe, but there is excavation for the ditch, which is also the most expensive at $1.25 million. So those are the four options we looked at for your review. And we'll take any, any other questions if you have any.
I have a question. So option three, you said we can have one flowing while you build the other one. But the other three, you don't have anything flowing, and how do you mitigate that? And so it doesn't cause problems for the people back there in the circle?
It would be built in stages. So you'd build a portion of it, take the existing system out. It would, we'd likely just take the existing system out and pump the existing system or use a bypass for the existing pipe flow coming down through the system, so.
So it wouldn't be a backup problem? It shouldn't be?
Shouldn't be. I mean, the construction would be, ensure that there wouldn't be a, a loss of flow or the flow would not be back in the system during construction.
Is there, is there any idea, Mr. Whitty, as to what or which of these four choices would allow for the most efficient flow of water? And also low-cost, long-term maintenance? Could you answer that? Or is that two separate questions?
The, the, I guess, as far as the maintenance goes, as long as it's installed correctly, all, all these systems should be fairly maintenance-free. You know, if you replace it with concrete pipe and install it correctly, maintenance on, on all four options should be relatively the same as far as the reliability of which system is the most reliable. Obviously, option two, where you're putting a whole new system, is, is probably one of the most reliable, although it's one of the most expensive. Option number one does, I guess, fix the worst area of the pipe system, which are these two pipes here. These two pipes are actually back pitched and really reduces the flow in the system. So option one has the greatest benefits to the system in the short term, I guess. Like I said, the con, drawback is it doesn't assess any future failure in the upper system. But option one does provide, I guess, the greatest benefit as far as conveyance goes, because it does create positive flow or positive slope on those pipes that are now have a negative slope, so.
John, would you do me a favor? And can you explain a little bit for the board how the capacity works going east to west? So when it all comes to that point where the 36-inch pipe would go in option one, could you explain how the field tile system, the existing field tile system that, which is not actually in the village in North Royal Works, and how it ties it in?
Yeah, there's a, the existing system in this location, again, it picks up the discharge from Tanner Trails Unit 6 through this 24-inch pipe through the system. At this point, the system picks up additional pipes. There's a drain tile that runs through the depressional area on the Forest Preserve property and ties into the storm sewer here. There's also an existing drain tile that runs to the southeast towards this depressional area here. So those also tie into the system and reduce, I guess, create more flow in the system and reduces the, the capacity of the system. You're not just picking up discharge from the pond, but you're also picking up these drain tiles that come in from different directions here. Also, the drain tile connects in here where it picks up additional flow. So that, those also contribute to the system. Now, the, the, the flat slope on the system, the more slope you have on a pipe, the greater the capacity, the more water you can, you can run through the pipe. So it's a flat slope, you know, the, the more slope you have on it, the better the capacity, the more, the more water you can get through a pipe. So does that answer your question, Steve, or?
Yes, I just thought it was good for an additional overview. And the other thing I want to point out, too, for everybody, is it was mentioned about the manholes and where they would go on the pipe and why it's important to have a distance of 800 compared to the normal 400. Essentially, if a pipe fills up with sediment or whatnot and the manholes are farther apart, A, it's harder to access the area that's flooded, but B, it's harder to actually jet the line and clean it because the force of the jetting, the farther away you go, the harder it is to clear the line. So one of the things that we would do is, in any of these scenarios, if we do any of them, we'd want to obviously put more manholes in so we can clean the segments easier and make sure that we can keep going if there ever was a blockage.
Correct. All these, all the systems and the costs include additional manholes compared to what's out there now.
I have a question. An option two, do we get better elevation on that pipe, drain pipe, so it has better flow?
Uh, yeah, I mean, the overall slope of the system is more consistent through the system. You know, this upper end has more slope than the lower end, but it's-
Here's my, I don't want to like have to do a half-patch job if you think the option two, in, in long-term, is going to suit the residents better than doing half the pipe. My question is, on option two, the, the 36-inch pipe, is it going to have better elevation than you would on option one? So the pipe would flow?
It'll have approximately the same elevation slope-wise.
So then, let me follow up with another question. You mentioned that option two would replace the entire system, but then you said option one only replaces half the system. And then under option one, you said the, the con is it doesn't replace the entire system. Is, does the entire system need, need to be replaced?
The entire system, as far as the condition of the pipe, needs to be-
Yes.
Yes. You know, it's, it's hard to say exactly when that pipe will fail, but it is in poor condition. The deflection of the pipe and the infiltration through the joints and some of the cracks in the upper end of the system do cause problems. And there was a sinkhole in this location up here also. So there could be, continue to have, to be sinkholes in the system and pipe failures.
So where you just pointed, is that, that the plastic pipe?
It's, yeah, it's all plastic pipe.
Oh, wow, we want all concrete pipe. This is our regular storm sewers. That's what, that's what I would be for option two, then. You're asking me, Mark Gailey, the person I would be for option two?
I agree with Trustee Gailey, Trustee Guffino here. With option one, you're already paying two-thirds of number two, and that way you get it all set and you can pitch it correctly and we'll be done with this, hopefully. So replacing half, that seems like a waste. Three, you got 12-inch pipe, this and that. That doesn't seem the best option. And four, I'm not sure if digging a area for the county would be good for us anyway. So I would think two would be the best.
I would agree.
I agree with that.
I agree.
Yeah, I would like to take option two also. Martinez?
I like four, but I can get the county to pay for part of it.
The purpose of the presentation tonight, and I, and I am really glad that the board has a lot of feedback here, is it's really just an overview. These are just the initial prices. I mean, we really haven't sat down yet at the staff level with the engineers and just made sure we vetted out every single option and made sure that we know exactly what the final pricing would be if we tweak things a little differently here. The reason I had John Whitty go over the capacity issue at that point of entry again was that's really where the crux of the problem is right now. The long-term solution would be to replace the whole pipe, but if you were going to do something in the more immediate future, that's why option one was a viable first option. But in that regards, our next steps would be to go back with WVK and with staff and review this again. And what we would essentially do is, this would be part of the budget process. So anytime you do something this big, we would start to look at our capital program- So anytime you do something this big, we would start to look at our capital program going out and trying to work it into some kind of funding mechanism so we can do the work. But obviously before that, we would go back to the board and let you know what those options are.
Well, what did we spend this year on? Solution to our sinkholes and whatever.
Off the top of my head, I believe this sinkhole was around $30,000 to repair.
That was our total expenditure through that whole period?
I believe so. Just for this one issue, I believe that's correct. It's around 30,000 if I remember correctly.
Yeah, that was for basically replacing a 20-foot section of pipe. So it was a high price, but necessary.
All right, sounds good. Any other questions for?
I have none.
Well, thank you. Very good presentation.
All right, thank you.
Very informative.
Yep, thank you.
All right. Well, that's the end of our discussions. I entertain a motion to.
No, we have another.
We have another item.
I'm sorry. Item number two, Mike.
I'll take that. Thank you. The second item for discussion tonight on Cow is the temporary use of 119 Butterfield Road. Just for context too, this is a discussion, anything that would be approved would be coming back to the village board for ordinance approval. Chapter or, chapter 11 of the zoning ordinance allows for a number of different temporary uses, our exhibits, Christmas tree lots that I have the right to sign off on as long as they don't require an outdoor special event permit. Anything else requires temporary, temporary use perspective requires board approval. If you guys recall back in 2016, we had done a temporary use. These are rare. We had done a temporary use for 1175 Oak Street, which I think we had to renew a couple of years later. It was the, the Orchard Community Church, I believe. And they were there for probably the greater part of three years. So as of right now, we're discussing a use at 119 Butterfield Road. The property there is zone I1, which is limited industrial district. Motor vehicle service and repairs listed as a special use in that district. Been working with the property owner for some time now. They had someone go into the property that's been operating a garage out of Oswego for a number of years. I think it was 12 years to be exact. They went into the property. They didn't obtain the proper zoning. There are different zoning options in this case. One would be a special use, which again, it is classified as a special use in that underlying district. A text amendment to change the zoning ordinance and a method to rezone the property. So there are a number of different options that the business owner has the, the option to do. In this case, I just kind of want to turn it over to them a little bit. I've got some conditions that I've included in the staff report that are including the zoning ordinance for this type of use. Should the board want to move forward? I'm also to some conditions that can be discussed if, if need be. But I guess I want to turn it over to the property owner, the business operator at this point in time to kind of maybe discuss a little bit about their use and how it pertains to that property.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Hello, everyone. Council members, staff members. Thanks for having us in. I've had the, as many of you know, building for a while and backyard was in there for 13 years. They outgrew the space. So I decided, you know, it's a good time to kind of spiff it up again the way it was when I moved in 25 years ago. So we got it looking good and had, I met Derek, I think in June-ish and went down and looked at his, his successful small business in Oswego. The thing I liked about it was it was a very clean, friendly atmosphere, the kind of user that I would like to have in my building. The kind of user I think that brings a lot to North Aurora. Talked to Derek a little bit. He's a young guy, kind of about the same age I was when I bought the building. And I'm kind of getting to the point where I'm, I'm moving along with, with getting closer to retirement. And he mentioned that he would like to buy it down the road. So that, I think, you know, plays into having a, a good quality guy there. A guy that is going to care about the building and become a piece of the fabric of the community.
And just for context too, I don't, there's no photograph up here, but the 119 Butterfield Road is the former backyard builder's location, which is right across the street from Runaway on Butterfield Row, which is located just east of Route 25.
Everyone remembers it as the place that had all the sheds in the front.
Correct.
Little less cluttered now. By the way, like I saw in your staff comments, the parking, I just sent Derek the parking diagram today. I can send one to you tomorrow too. We can get that done, you know, probably this weekend.
Steve, I have a quick question. So this building, this building was, you know, I'm familiar with the prior use was. Now, isn't this building, I mean, I, I'm assuming there has to be a significant build-out, including installing lifts and, and you know, oil and hazmat storage and things like that. For me, I, I, you know, I, I know we've had this problem in the past where people just go ahead and ask, you know, say sorry first and ask permission later. And I'm, I'm just, I just want to know a little bit about, you know, knowing that what the zoning is on this property, why would this type of construction, this type of use just be taken advantage of and just pop up without having the appropriate permitting or whatever the process would be to retrofit the building?
I could, I could take that if you'd like, Steve.
Okay, go ahead.
The, yeah, the, I, I did speak with the business owner. It sounds like for the most part, the, the building is, is almost there. I believe what we need to be installed would be some lifts. And I'm not sure if they can operate for the time being without those lifts, but those would require, you know, permits at some extent if they're doing any electrical work, plumbing work. It sounds like at this point in time, they're just needing to put, install the lifts, but the property for the most part functions as it would need be for that type of use. Obviously, we don't like to work in this fashion, work backwards, but you know, we are kind of where we are at this point. And it would give us some time if we were to look at, you know, maybe a six-month time where we can have this all basically approved to explore the various zoning options and how would that would relate to the existing neighborhood. I mean, you can tell by this picture, on the right side or the east side, there is an existing fence with screens from the, to the, to the Woodland Lakes to the east. So that is already there. The backyard has a storage area, so they can put their cars back there, which is out of public sight. So, you know, as far as uses go, this actually does function fairly well for the type of use that they're looking for. And obviously you have some loading spaces in the south side of the, from the building here, but I believe you can pull bill, you can pull vehicles around to the back. So it does, from what I gather, lend itself to the use already.
So I, I got something here. So they, so it's a garage repair, which is deemed essential workers. And it's provides access for people on the east side of the river, affordable options to get their vehicles repaired. Right? I mean, I, I don't know of any other garages on the east side of the river. So I like.
We, we have on the east side.
Yeah, I think I, I spoke to the operator. I think there were going to be, I think somewhere between five and 10 employees on the site at any time.
I'd be in favor of moving forward.
My concern is, you know, my concern is I, you know, I've never been a big fan of people taking advantage of, you know, not going through the appropriate channels. And, and this isn't the first time this has happened recently. My other concern is I, you know, is there going to be a hazmat situation? Are they going to have underground storage tanks? I mean, is there going to be a public safety issue with this type of business so close to residential property?
Yeah, with, if they were to put catch basins in for that, there would be some consideration with Fox Metro. I think they, they're familiar with the process in Oswego. They are part of the Fox Metro Water Reclamation District there. So they are familiar with the requirements. I think you said the last place they had to replace some drains with catch basins because the drains were going to the storm drain. So they were actually, they, they are, they, after speaking with them, they, they do sound familiar and versed in the actual requirements for that type of thing. And it would be basically regulated so that would be kept on site, whether it be put into containers like some of the other uses or be conveyed offsite some other, some other way.
So to put this in, let, let you know how exactly we got here. It was late last week, it might've even been as late as Wednesday, that we kind of noticed some activity going on over there. And as we checked into it, we had found out that the business owner had called the village for his business registration, at which time we talked to Mike and Mike had said that he had some concerns about the zoning because it, it's, it's a special use. So mechanic shops are allowed as a special use in that I district. But once we found that out, we made contact and found out that the business owner had already closed up his business in Oswego and was already moving his employees over here. So because we had the day before the board meeting on, and I can't remember, Mike, if it was the day of or the day before the packet went out.
Pretty sure it was the day of.
What we decided to do, which would have been Thursday, was to give the village board the opportunity as a temporary occupancy. So that's really what we're doing right now tonight is we're looking at whether the village board would allow the business to go in there temporarily. And that would be that they would still have to go through all of the zoning process with the caveat that their, that the village board and/or plant commission can deny the zoning application in theory. I mean, they have to go through the plant commission first and it goes to the village board for final approval. And whether it doesn't go as a special use, if it was a zoning change, any of those would trigger the plant commission process and the village board's final approval on any rezoning of that property. So what Mike was doing was giving, and he thought it was a good idea, and I agreed with him, to give the board an option rather than let them set up and then go through the zoning process to take them to court and tell them to stop working and everything. Before that even got to that point, we tried to nip it in the bud and bring it right to the board and let them, let the board know what was going on and see if that was something that we can at least remedy temporarily.
Let me say something here. I like the idea of business and development on the east side. I'm kind of biased towards that. So I'm inclined to go ahead and allow them temporarily and to see if they can go ahead and process the proper paperwork and get the thing done up according to our ordinances and our, and invariances we have to give to them.
I, I don't understand why a business would, you know, pay to have a space built out and start operating when they know there's a chance that this isn't going to be approved. So I don't think this is something we should, should do halfway. Again, you know, how many times has this happened where we have a business owner who is quite clear on what the zoning and use is within that zoning, you know, takes it upon themselves to, to not follow the ordinance. And we do have our ordinance and our zoning for a reason. And I just don't like the idea that, you know, this is going to be a precedent if we keep doing this.
It's a sustainable business. He's, looks like he's been a business in Oswego for 12 years.
I, Mark, I get, I get that. I'm, I'm, I would love to have the business. I'm just saying that we cannot let people just go roughshod willy-nilly over our zoning designations and our ordinances just because they have a tenant that, that they want to rent it to. I mean, why, why do we even have zoning rules?
Temporary, temporary agreement until they, they bring it up to code. So that, I'm, I'm in favor of the, letting them have their temporary permit.
Yeah, but I, I, I guess, I, I kind of tend to agree with Laura. What, what is the difference between this business and any other business that wants to open up a business that has to go through the special use permit? What's to prevent them in the future from starting the business? And, and then better to ask for forgiveness than permission and then doing the same thing. Where I, I, I kind of, I am all for having the business there. But I, I, I am kind of concerned about the process and the precedent that sets for other businesses because it really, it, it demeans our special use process.
Yeah, we're working on internally too. So we're working on centralizing all the information that, that ebbs and flows from the department. You know, some, some cities have occupancy permits where they're, you know, required to sign off on anything before anyone can actually go into a space. You know, you have to have the fire department sign off on it, engineering, planning, zoning, building. We don't have that process here. We have our business registration program. So, you know, we rely on people to, to call us, you know, proactively to get those forms and to get that information. So we're doing other we can too to, to keep pushing this forward when these things come up. We take it as an opportunity to kind of learn from it and see how we can adjust and then making sure that we're very, very clear with our information and getting it conveyed as to what this is and what the processes are.
Do, do you think we weren't clear, Mike?
I'm not going to say that in this case, but you know, like I said, there are ways that we are always looking to, you know, improve those processes.
My concern, I, I'm sorry, Mark, were you done?
That's okay, Mark, go ahead.
My concern is th- this is a business that we all want. I, I, I would think that everybody would agree that this is a good viable business that we would want. What about the next time when it's a business that we don't want? What if it's that the used car dealership that's in the lot that needed a special use and he just moves 50 cars there? And, you know, it, we've set up this precedent where we can give him temporary status or zoning status. And, and that's my concern is that, and then do we have to do it? Because we've done it in the past.
That's a good question for our legal, our legal person. What is, what does that really mean if we, precedent? What does that mean?
Well, any time we're inconsistent in the way we apply our laws, we open ourselves up to potential claims that we are treating people unfairly and, you know, it, it could result in someone forcing our hand or, or litigation. I, it doesn't necessarily mean that we couldn't put our foot down in the future, but it makes it more difficult. There's no doubt about it.
Setting situation or has this been, has this occurred in the past? Where we've given this temporary approval to, to operate for a business pending their putting in the proper application and permit process?
Well, in the seven years that I've been here, the only one that I, that we process is what I've mentioned was 1175 Oak Street. That was for the religious institution, the B2 district. That use is actually prohibited in that zoning district. And that did get consideration at that time. So this is a use that is allowed in the zoning district.
We had already approved a special use of that. We just extended it. We had already gone through all the process to get that approved as a special use.
Right. It wasn't after the fact or.
Well, there's a difference between a special use and a temporary use. This is just a temporary use, a special use.
On an existing, existing one that we'd already gone through the
Right.
Process on.
I, I got a question, Mike. Isn't anybody else interested in the property? How long has it been vacant?
Not very long.
I think it's been vacant since more of the begin, I don't know if time's still on, but I think it was more vacant since the beginning of the year.
About the beginning of the year. And just to be clear, I mean, I did say to the tenant that he did have to go to the city. It was a special use under the zoning that he did need to talk to you guys and get a business license. So.
So if we, we don't approve this, this lot goes vacant? Is that correct, Mike?
No, what would happen is the, the, the temporary use would basically is just a way of, because they moved from their location in Oswego, this is a way of allowing it kind of get set up on the site. You know, because it's going to take some time to get to that point while they're going through the, the process itself. Again, they can still go through the process. They can still open. This is, this just gives them a temporary point in time to come into the site and get situated while they're kind of going through that zoning process in itself. And again, there are a couple of zoning paths. And I would anticipate that we would require them to give us the paperwork for whatever zoning means they go through before we report back to the village board with an ordinance allowing the temporary use. Meaning that they're going, that they're on, they've applied and then we can get them on a future agenda, whichever means they, they seek.
So it, so if we don't approve or don't give them a temporary permit, they could come back and they'll, they'll go through the process. Is that what I'm hearing from you?
Yeah, but then their business, yeah, their business will be shut down in that, in that intermediate time.
But then they come back, right? And then they get.
It'd be October though, right?
Well, depending on what they do, if it's a special use requiring notices, I mean, the earliest, the earliest available to get back to the board would be either October or November. to get back to the board would be either October or November.
So the board asked a question earlier about setting precedents, and we had the one issue west of Randall. But we did have one other occasion. It was the old Marathon Gas Station where we did have someone that was running an auto mechanic shop out of there without the proper zoning approval for that. And when that happened, if I correct you if I'm wrong, but the process wasn't immediate. It wasn't that the village immediately shuts them down and says, you have to stop working today. In that case, just like this case, it had this person open and we had not noticed it until they had already opened. That's the question I think would be good for Kevin is what is the process? Once a business has established and open, but they're in zoning violation, what is the process to? How much time is necessary to give them to either remedy the situation? Because in the case of the Marathon Gas Station, I want to say we gave the person at least a month or two to begin with, Mike. Do you remember?
Yeah, that sounds about right. They were operating the illegal motor motor vehicle service and repair.
Oh, yeah. After they quit as a service station, obviously as a service station, and they were selling gas, they were able to work on cars. So it's when they stopped selling gas, they were no longer a service station. I don't know. We know we've got, we've got an opportunity for someone to have a business. I'm not so worried about precedence. I am worried, though. I am concerned when someone comes in and and they're allowed to do something when it seems to me that they they knew there are consequences. But in this case, you know, we're not penalizing them in any way.
That's nice.
So.
Yeah, I mean, I pretty much have the same sentiment with everybody. I mean, I think we'd all like to have it there. I took a drive over there today and took a look at it and, you know, it looks far much better than it did as a shed company in back there. You have an opportunity, you know, and I think it adding a business in town and adding more employees is great. Same way, though, it's it's kind of unfortunate that it's the tail wagging the dog or whatever. It's just. Yeah, I don't know.
That bothers me. I'm not worried about the precedence. It just.
Yeah. Right. I'm with you.
We'll fight the next one when it when it happens, but.
But I mean, is there any bite in anything in the future or what? You know, like Mark Carroll said, trustee Carroll, you know, what's, you know, the next one and the next one, and we just set up shop and then we go backwards going, hey, can you do this or do that? And penalties or I don't know. It just like I said, I'm I'm all for it, except like I said, just kind of.
Some kind of penalty, some kind of monetary
Yeah.
cost here.
Yeah, we can discuss that. Again, this is being a Cal discussion. We can come back with an ordinance that would lay out the conditions that we would impose upon the business temporarily. Again, they would still be required to go through that process, which could establish a whole set of different conditions. What's in the zoning ordinance? And then requiring them to give us an application before we would even consider coming back to the village board for the temporary use. That way we have all the paperwork in from them. And if there is a consideration for, you know, penalty, we can, I can discuss that with the village attorney prior to ordinance coming back to the village board for consideration.
It's kind of unfortunate, though. Here you had a bu- the building owner. You had a realtor that helped this young guy set up, you know, everything. And nobody did any due diligence, I guess, or not telling anybody what was allowed and what's not allowed. That that's kind of another issue. But you have to, as a renter, you got to, I guess, you got to dig through everything and figure things out. Even when you go down to get a business license, I mean, maybe it doesn't trigger the next step or not. But it should be allowed or not allowed. But you got to do your homework.
Mike, could you do me a favor? And could you please explain to the board just so they so they're aware of both options? Basically, what a temporary, you kind of laid it out a minute ago, what a temporary use ordinance might look like? Be brought back on August 17th, I'm guessing.
You know, I think we've gone through and discussed it. I think we all believe that this is a business that we shouldn't have in that location. I don't think that's a problem at all. I think we're all disgusted with the events leading up to where we are. But I don't think any of us want to prevent them from being in business. And therefore, I think we should go with a temporary ordinance for them. I, you know, that's my feeling. I and that's, you know, I hope that we we would somewhat agree on that. I think that what we're missing out on is is that if somebody has missed our ordinance and not done what we wanted them to do, and and we don't have, the only way we can penalize them is not let them go into business. And that's not really what we want. So, you know, that's, I think that I don't know what we can do to catch these in the future. But or we can say this is the last one. We're going to let it happen. But I think it's a viable business. I'd like to see them in business. Even though.
Hi. All right, thank you.
I'd like to add one last thought going forward into the future. I wonder if by giving this business the flexibility and thought here to allow them to go ahead and function and give them a temporary permission to function to operate until they have the paperwork in. I wonder if in the future, we can't just, after this is done, establish some kind of future regulation or a a a fine or an additional cost when this occurs to kind of like help deter people from doing that in the future. This is ex post facto in this case, I guess. But I'm wondering if we couldn't do that in the future. Make make it the the rule that if they do this, set up business without proper permit work.
What's our attorney think of that?
Yeah. What I I would like to hear from the attorney on.
Yeah, so a few things I've been thinking about as I hear everyone talk. You know, the the situation with the marathon, they were operating the business in violation of the zoning code. And it was handled through, you know, sending them a notice of violation. And basically, you know, the the goal for any violation of of ordinances to get people in compliance. So they were given time to come into compliance and they didn't. So they were shut down. We had another situation up on Grant Street, maybe. I can't remember, actually not on on the east side of 25. Again, where someone was building a building already in noncompliance. And there were fines for violating the ordinance. And eventually they were allowed to go through the process and get approval, but they did pay fines. So we've had a couple situations. They're not exactly the same thing. In this situation, they actually haven't started operating. So to that extent, there's really no violation yet at this point.
Yeah, that, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I so I think that makes a little bit of a difference here. It's not exactly like the church where they came in ahead of time and and got a special use on a temporary basis before they did anything. But you know, even though they've done some stuff to the building, they aren't actually in operation yet. So, you know, this is somewhere in between. And there's obviously, you know, based on this discussion, there's obviously the the notion that you know, they they could not get the special use. And they have to go through the process. I I guess I'm not sure whether this is really a fine situation or not. But I I do think that the board has the authority to allow the temporary use subject to, you know, conditioned upon them going through the process. And there is no guarantee that they'll actually get the special use, but it, you know, obviously, we would go through the process and treat it as we would any other special use that comes along. And, you know, if they can't establish the things that they need to to get a special use.
Well, it'd be a risk on their part. So that's up for them to do.
Right. So those are my thoughts.
Yeah, I think the key word is operation. Kevin's right. They technically are not operating. There are fines under our business registration because in order to operate your business, you have to have that registration form. And if I don't sign off on the zoning, then they're technically in violation. So there are violations, but I think the fact that they're not operable at that point prevents that fine to begin with. To your point, trustee Lowey.
But but I I think.
To be clear, let let me respond. To be clear, I wasn't suggesting we utilize any fine system with this instance in this case. But going forward to somehow impose some kind of consequence to people not doing due diligence. I I guess it's that. That's my position.
Well, I I I would just agree, Mike, that but I I think the way that to deter this from happening in the future is not to allow it now. That sends a message that people can't get away with not looking up, doing the due diligence and following our ordinances. I I do, I I do not agree that we should just let this go. They're not in operation. The I I don't know what the circumstances are with the business owner in Oswego, why he shut down, chose to shut down his business. But here, we we've already expended costs in this temporary procedure. If if he starts operating temporarily and we deny the special use, then we're going to expend costs to have to stop it. I I I don't understand why we're going to create an ordinance for a temporary use when he could just go through the process.
Well, it's the length of time that it takes, I guess.
Well, Mark, Carol, are you suggesting that he just not operate until he gets approval through the regular process?
Correct. That is exactly. I I think that's fair to. That's what other businesses are forced to do. You can't break ground when you do on a development until you get the proper permits and proper zoning.
Yeah.
I I agree with Mark too.
Well, it sounds like there's there's I appreciate the feedback. Like I said, we'll continue discussions and there's been feedback on both sides. So if there is an ordinance we need to prepare, that would kind of lay lay for some of the issues we talked about tonight. We can further discuss that prior to the next meeting.
Well, I don't we certainly, I don't know if we've got a 50 50 feeling on this or what. But I know there's certainly some that are in favor of not giving the temporary and some that are. So I guess we'll work on it. We're not going to come to a decision tonight, so.
Yeah, one last comment I'm going to make is if the gentleman has to wait till October, November, I just wonder what that's going to do to his livelihood and his his business future. That's a concern we have to, on a human level, just on a human level. This is the man's way of making a living. And in this particular time with the unemployment rates and the economic situation going on with the virus, I think he'd be highly vulnerable to losing his livelihood for his life. So I I think we ought to have a little bit of a humanness here or compassion in some way so that this guy doesn't have to wait till October or November. I wonder if we could speed up the process if we're going to hold to Mark Carroll's idea to not allow him to operate until the proper procedure or application procedure has been completed.
So where I was, where I was going earlier was I just want to make sure the board knows we don't have a meeting, the first meeting of September. So that was another reason why the staff brought it tonight. We have a meeting on August 17, and then we don't have one until, I think it's September 21. So in that regard, that was one reason why we moved it forward. The other is, and I think it's important, Mike, explain very quickly what the actual special use process is as far as timing, how long it takes, and whether or not they can even get to the September plan commission meeting.
Yeah, it 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 would be tight. Obviously, we have notification requirements, both via signage via mail and newspaper publication. That all takes time, applications, going through the operations. What this what this temporary use does, it just allow, it just gives us time. It gives us time to get all the to work with the business owner, the property owner, to figure out which zoning course is the best course and and to apply that accordingly. And then allow them to, you know, sort of continue at this point. You know, and there are circumstances too where like like Steve said, Labor Day weekend, Labor Day having an impact on the meeting schedule. So the temporary use is the way of sort of speeding that up just by way of getting allowing them to stay there until we can get this figured out. But it would be figured out best case scenario until the end of October. And that's best case scenario. Otherwise, realistically, we're probably looking at November at this point, given the hearing schedule and sending out notifications. So that's that's where we're at right now. I'm going to guess realistically, it would be November.
Well, I would like to, I would really like for us to to have some kind of a an expression of our our desire by each one of us to to see whether we should really go ahead with something for something positive for our next meeting. Or we can, I guess, come up with something for our next meeting and either pass it or defeat it. So. But I don't get a strong feeling. I I'd get sort of a 50 50 feeling here. So. Steve, what are your comments?
My thought would be this, if the board is kind of split at the committee level, but because of the timing, what we could do is Mike and I can go back and draft what we think would be a very tight temporary occupancy ordinance. Bring it back to August 17. And the board would have the opportunity, obviously, to see it before the meeting when the packets go out. And if the board doesn't like the idea, they can always vote it down.
Can always add conditions too. So if there's something that wanted to be added or taken away, they can certainly do that before or during the meeting.
Well, we've we've never really taken any kind of a vote in our committee of the whole meeting. But we've been able to get a good feeling as to whether it's positive or negative. In this case, I I see a real mix and I don't know what it would be. So and I don't.
You know, I I would just like to say that the board did not create the situation. And while I would love to see the business come in, again, to mine and Mark Carroll's point, you know, our job as trustees is to ensure the the public good of our village, and part of that is enacting zoning. Again, we we need to treat all of our businesses equally and fairly. And while I do feel bad for this business owner, I mean, again, due diligence, you had a realtor, you had a business owner, you have the village. I mean, he had multiple channels that that he should have, you know, made sure that this is a viable location for his business. And again, I'd like to get some input from the planning commission. I mean, due to the the virus, we haven't had a planning commission meeting in months. You know, and I'd like to get their input as well on this. I don't, I don't. While I want the business, I would be, I'm not in favor of of issuing the temporary ordinance.
Okay, that's enough discussion. We'll come up with something and then present it at the next board meeting. Our next item is, that's the end of our call meeting. An entertaining motion to adjourn call meeting to our executive session.
Motion to adjourn.
And discuss property acquisition.
Second.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, I made a motion.
Second.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning to executive session, say aye.
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 Both. All right, we're now in executive session.